Conference will now be recorded.
Fledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, morning all. Welcome to Monday, November 3rd, Mitchell County Board Supervisors Meeting. The meeting is available to the public by go-to meeting. And I just want to throw in that we moved the meeting from Tuesday to Monday so that hopefully people get out and vote on Tuesday. I'd like to approve, if somebody would entertain a motion, to approve the agenda, moving item 3A down to 6A. I move to approve the agenda, moving item 3A down to 6A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two, approve the minutes of the October 28th meeting. Everybody had a chance to read those? If so, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve October 28th meeting.
Marcus made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim, any discussion?
Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
No county attorney. No sheriff. Any department head discussion?
Do we need to put on the agenda to make that oracle, the new paper for Mitchell County?
Maybe. I'll try to come up.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other department head? If not, we'll move on to county attorney.
For engineer.
Eric.
We'll have a lot for you today. The bridge project south of McIntyre was a little bit washed out. You know, we had too much rain to do any dirt work, but there's only one excavator left. Now they're waiting on the dirt contractor to come in. So, once it dries out enough for them to do dirt work, they'll be getting dirt work done. And then, we're going to approaches and guardrail. The only thing I have for you, other than that, is the approval of the plans for our Addison Avenue project. Normally, you guys don't want to sign these, but since we're working with Howard County on this one, I brought the title sheet in so we could have it signed off on you guys. And then, I'm going to try to back sit to him as fast as I can before their board meeting that starts at 8:45. So, if I could get approval and some signatures, I can maybe get that out to him.
Do I have a motion for approval of Addison Avenue resurfacing?
Move to approve plans for Addison Avenue FM-CO66, PM91, -55, -66.
Jim has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
So what I have for you this morning, I see you have any other questions?
Any questions for the county engineer?
Thank you. Who seconded that?
I did.
Moving on, or Rich, are you done?
I'm done.
Moving on, discussion, possible action on CLP application for Nathan Zool.
Morning.
Morning.
I have application for Nathan Zool here today, the address site being 299 South Elliott Street in Mitchell. The total project cost being $103,73.11. The amount requested is $20,000. This would be going towards a remodel to add a basement, bedroom, and living room. This was approved by our meeting, our MCEDC last Monday, October 27. As far as the scoring goes, he met enough, he actually got 100 out of 100 points for all of the meeting the goals of the program. Any questions?
If no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion for the CLP application for Nathan Zool.
Marcus made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Jenny. Okay, moving on, discussion and possible action on appointment, reappointment of Board of Adjustments member.
Who made that one?
Pardon me?
Because I made that one.
I don't see her.
I think she's coming.
Okay.
Amanda, are you there?
Let me step out.
I know the number, I'm not sure the name, but the term expires on 11/1. And I think they still want to do it, I just don't remember the name.
Yeah, I talked to her, and the person does re-up, so. I remember.
Yeah, I just can't remember.
She's telling. Good morning.
Surprise.
Sorry, I've been trying to have a new printer set up. Okay, Board of Adjustment number. Teresa Verjon has said that she is willing to be reappointed to the Board. So, that's.
Okay, at this time, if Teresa's willing to step up, I would entertain a motion. I move to reappoint Teresa Verjon to the Board of Adjustments. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, Sydney.
Aye.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, discussion, possible action on ISAC amicus curi brief support. Curi, I'm sorry. Not sure who would put this on, or what it's about, other than what I have read online.
So, I asked for this to be added to the agenda, following a webinar last week that was put on by Iowa State Association of Counties, ISAC. They have, their Board of Directors has come with a request for financial support for an amicus brief in the case of Kuser versus Shelby County. And this is a highly litigated situation that started initially 2021. In 2022, Story in Shelby County put in some zoning ordinances to protect or to guard situations from hazardous pipeline coming through their county. And they have been in litigation with Summit regarding those ordinances. The important thing that I would like to bring out, and that I have gotten through both the webinar and all the information that I've gained over the last year or so, this amicus brief is being filed on behalf of ISAC's membership, and it makes the argument that highlights the importance of local control. And so, that is really what this all comes down to. Yes, it is in opposition to a couple of court cases on zoning ordinances that were enacted in these other counties, but multiple other counties across the state, and possibly, you know, could be impacted. And we have federal rights to impose zoning ordinances. And the Summit is claiming that because of the fact that safety was addressed, that they shouldn't be subject to those zoning ordinances. ISAC has stated that this is attempts by private industry to circumvent our authority at the local level. And so, at the very base, it hinders our ability to protect property rights, land use concerns, economic development in certain areas, and climate-affected infrastructures. So, many counties have been involved in related litigation. Others have been in contact with Shelby and Story. So, they are asking that we consider financially supporting a contribution of a minimum of $500 to help cover the cost of the amicus brief, which will be coming before the Supreme Court. And so, it's a different kind of litigation, so to speak, at a higher level. And that, which has a total cost of $25,000, and they're hoping that they can get enough counties that are interested in protecting their local rights and their concerns for local control over zoning. And yes, this is currently a pipeline issue, but this case has the possibility to impact a whole lot more going down in the future. And so, many counties and ISAC have been concerned. The Iowa Farm Bureau is also filing an amicus brief, from what I understand as well. So, for that reason, I move that we, as a county, Mitchell County, contribute or consider a contribution of $500 to assist in the cost of the amicus brief that is being filed at that level.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
One second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Where would this be coming out of? What budget line item? Is there any way we can wait until the new budget year to put that in our budget?
They will. That's a really great question. They need to secure this funding by November 21st, and it would come out of our general budget.
Why hasn't the ISACs come to us if they're seeking, like, from all the counties? Like, why aren't they coming to us and presenting? Like, that's one of our stipulations, if somebody wants money. They want to, we want them to come to us and say, hey, this is the situation. This is how much money we're looking for, and we're just skipping that step.
I believe that we each received a letter from ISAC, along with an email letter from ISAC, along with the brief from Allers and Cooney. Copy of the brief was.
I never received anything or an email regarding this situation until I saw it on my meeting packet today.
Allers, or ISAC also sent an email to, I believe, every supervisor. In fact, this is addressed to Board Chair. Well, that one is Herbert County, but they sent an email. I can certainly pull that up.
If they've been sending it to Board Chair, then somebody's been opening my mail, because I haven't been receiving any mail from the ISACs or an email. And I remember Pam stating last time, like, we should have our information ahead of time. And if they're going to come in, they need to come in and say, this is what's going on. We need this much donation. So, I'm just confused on why we don't have that step if everyone else has to do that.
And I can pull the ISAC emails certainly here for you, because that would definitely be a situation. Iowa State Association of Counties, so they had a webinar related to this request, and that was on October 29. And they sent out various reminders about that webinar. And then, I do believe that perhaps, they also stated, I did ask, they also stated that they had mailed documents to the Chair of the county, of each county, that they had.
Well, again, I never received one. So, if somebody's taking mail, and I didn't receive it, I have no knowledge of this. That is the problem. I also think that if we are going to do something that is not currently in our budget, we need to figure out it for our next budget, not this budget.
And I'm not sure if it's in mail upstairs or not, to answer that question. I did ask last week if they had indeed sent that, sent the information out.
I also have a question, too, that I've been noticing Allers and Cooney's bills in our claims here the last month, month and a half, strictly on CO2 pipeline. And I'm guessing that Tim Whipple sending this is not free. So, it seems like we're continually getting bills from Allers and Cooney and Tim Whipple. Is that going to continue on?
Well, the bills that you have signed off for from Tim Whipple's service for Allers and Cooney, initially, way back in February, March, we identified that we had questions about the pipeline, as far as, we had several people contacting us on zoning ordinances. So, our initial questions to him had that as a title on it. So, when he logs his legal docket or his services, he puts that as the, whatever it is that you're contacting him about. And our initial contact conversation with him was regarding zoning ordinances. We had several people contacting us on zoning ordinances. So, that's why, that's a great question, because I asked that question several months ago. Why does this say that? But if you look in the detail on those invoices, it details exactly what it is. The right-of-way ordinance is what Tim Whipple was hired to work on.
Isn't Tim Whipple representing Shelby County, and didn't he pretty much say that whatever happens underneath the representation of Tim Whipple, that he would pretty much, I mean, where they're under his umbrella? So, is this $25,000 not under his umbrella?
So, this $25,000 is at a much higher level, and so, it is at the Supreme Court level. So, Shelby and Story have been battling, and they have been paying to battle these issues, along with other counties, through the courts over the last few years. And they have now petitioned the United States Supreme Court. And the concern is that, that an independent or a private industry is overruling based on a safety regulation. And counties are saying, this is a zoning issue, and state and federal law allows us to zone. It allows us that through all state and federal laws. And so, the $25,000, and that is really a very considerate amount for the legal entity that would be representing these counties at the state level. And this is an ISAC, Iowa State Association of Counties. You know, Tim Whipple explained the case that Story in Shelby County had. And yes, he did represent those counties in the 8 district, District 8, 8 district court. Correct me on that. This is to take this situation to the Supreme Court, because many Iowa counties have a concern that this would just be the tip of the iceberg in curtailing local control, which supervisors have the ability to protect our citizens. But it isn't just a safety issue. This is economic development. This is land use, property rights, values of property moving forward. And that we are planning and zoning commissions have the right to do zoning. And it so happens that this pipeline industry is the first one to jump onto this boat, so to speak. So, the concern for several of the counties in the webinar last week were, this is just the beginning. And if we don't head this off, we've lost all local control. And we've not lost it, we've given it to them. And this is our opportunity to protect Iowa counties.
So, I've been hearing a lot about zoning, zoning, zoning. So, why should this be coming out of our general budget? Shouldn't it be coming out of our zoning budget?
It should be coming out of the general budget, because it is a litigation. Even the right-of-way ordinance, of course, the right-of-way didn't go through planning and zoning, but the legal fees come out of a legal ledger account. Am I correct on that, Rachel? Legal fees come out of the.
How you guys approve it? I'm picturing the legal stuff that we do upstairs. When we get those bills, those come out of general supplemental.
Correct. And that question was asked, Sydney.
But this wasn't our legal, so it should not come out of our general budget under legal, so.
The comment was that it should come out of your general fund, your general supplemental fund, the legal, any legal administrative ledger account.
So, you're worried about where the $500 is coming from, Sydney?
I'm just saying that it wasn't established in our budget for this year, and I just don't know where it should come out of.
I'll cover the $500 then.
Send them a check yourself.
Yes.
But then, it's not an agenda, you know?
So, Mitchell County is stating that they do not want to, in that case, that would be an individual contribution?
To be clear on a topic, it's been mentioned that this has to do with safety, 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 which that is part of it. But it also says in here, and this is a quote, I'll just read it, "Regulations that merely relate to location or route such as the county setbacks are not excluded from the preemptive scope of the PSA." So, it has to do with setbacks also.
Right. So, the situation is that Summit is arguing that the zoning ordinances are due to safety, and the counties are saying, this isn't just a safety issue. This is also due to a lot of other issues. We have other states as well that are in support.
And I just want to reiterate, I'm not against doing this, but I also feel like this should be an agenda item towards our budget year for next year, and it's just being fast-tracked. And I just want to know exactly where it's going to come out of, and all the details. And I wish somebody from ISACs would have came to us and said, this is what's going on. This is what we need. We did not have that. I just have a piece of paper to go off of, and what Pam is saying. That is the problem that I am having at this moment.
And it could be that that information maybe didn't make its way to you. I did ask, and they did confirm, that information had been sent to all counties. So, but that's all I had to go on, Sydney. I certainly understand, from that standpoint, your additional questions. I think that oftentimes, we have items that come into our budget that we have to make changes for, or adapt our budget for. And this, I believe, is one of those items, from a local control standpoint. I feel that would certainly warrant our support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call.
Roll call, Jim.
No.
Tom.
No.
Mark.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Sydney.
Aye.
Was that a yes or no?
Sydney, you wanted, you didn't come across real close.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Move on. Meetings attended. I had nothing.
None.
I had the webinar that ISAC put on in regard to the issue we just discussed. I also had a Mitchell County substance abuse meeting, and it was very interesting, because we had a lot of folks that attended that haven't been able to attend in the past. And we invited other community members, and so, it was well-attended. Sheriff Bieber came, along with other law enforcement individuals, and talked about substances that they're seeing throughout our county, methamphetamines, marijuana, alcohol, prescription drugs, and so forth. They're also talking about concerns over vapes, because they're now seeing THC, and some vapes that are laced possibly with other drugs. And so, we spoke about things that we can do to reduce the amount of substance abuse in our county, and future education that would be helpful. They have a program, we have a program hidden in, excuse me, hidden in plain sight, that we would like to continue to get out to various events where large groups are. And the sheriff and the law enforcement was very much in support of that. They'd like to possibly do some attending of maybe a church event, or parent-teacher conferences, where parents can have some hands-on education about substance abuse. So, that was all I had.
I also watched the ISAC webinar, and then I had a Iowa Workforce meeting, and we're having trouble with language barriers at the employment centers with all the different. we're having trouble with language barriers at the employment centers with all the different kind of people that are, come to the United States. And the government shutdown is starting to affect the Iowa workforce centers.
I had a FMC, Early Childhood Iowa, um, that's my committee that we have linked, um, two different areas together, hoping that's what the legislature will do. Um, we had a, a bylaws committee present the first reading to us. Um, the legislature, um, asked to send a letter of intent, and so we put that together, sent that down there. Um, and we talked about future meeting dates, public comments, um, uh, insurance, as each local has, is insured by, um, I believe it's ISAC. And we're hoping that the legislature continues that on once we become one. Um, talked about current funding, and, uh, the seventh, I believe, is this Friday, yes, um, that's an important date. That's when the State Board meeting in Des Moines is, and there's a Zoom link for that, and I will definitely be on that to watch, and that will answer, hopefully answer a lot of our questions, to be able to continue, so hopefully. That's all I had. Sydney, call Sydney. Okay, moving on.
Maybe she got about meetings? I don't know. Did you ask her?
I think she said no.
Okay, I missed that. Okay, my apologies.
Uh, public comment.
I would just, um, just kinda reiterate what Pam was saying, that the ISAC webinar is still available online through the iowacounties.org/meetingswebinar, and that, um, the purpose of this, they're not sending it just to the pipeline counties, they're sending it, the requests statewide, because it could affect all counties related to water use, related to that hydrogen mining, whatever it is, and the Bitcoin mining, or all other issues that are coming up. Well, that's why this local, keeping local control is important to most counties. I don't know if it's that important to your county, but we hope it is.
Cute, anybody else?
If no one else has anything, I'm, I'm online.
Lisa, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna, uh, put some comment in on the, um, the litigation within the ISACs. So that, that webinar is available in the public, and it's, um, I, I understand as well that it's trying to retain local control. So the litigation that is out is litigation that is there, because new situations have come into the realm to discuss where local control begins and ends. And right now, that's being threatened with, um, this, uh, particular case is asking that, uh, local co, control be given up, um, due to, um, a understanding from that company of, uh, federal control overlapping it. So for this to be looked at and decided, which it's, it is not right now, it's been, uh, going through the court systems, and it wants to, it wants to be put before the U.S. Supreme Court, and it's made it to that level to be heard at the U.S. Supreme Court. To be able to be heard, um, there are many, many, many cases that come before the U.S. Supreme Court, and, um, to have extra standing, it needs to be, um, have support, like, from the counties. We are showing that we wanna have, um, control there. So there, uh, a friendly letter, a curi brief is a friendly letter to the court, and, um, that's what they're asking to be a part of, to support, is this curi brief. And I, and I believe, I understand that Worth County has already sent in their money. So, um, I just ask that there be support, um, countywide support in retaining local control. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else?
I have time. But my only fear with this, with this business, um, is that this is just a foreshadowing of more nefarious things to come in, in government, the federal government. If we give up control over this small thing, which has the potential for protecting a lot in the future, if we revisit it and reconsidered and not let, you know, the small pieces here of, well, I didn't give the email in time, or any of that, be something that engenders a giving up of the working locally, people we know to protect ourselves from other forces, which we also are getting to know pretty well, and they will not be working at our benefit at the local level. This is a serious issue. It seems small enough, but giving up this local control? Living where I've lived in the years, I've seen this pattern, 50 years, in different places. This is how it starts. Take care.
Thanks, John.
And in reference to that, I would like to say that, um, I am concerned about local control, and so I will be making a personal contribution, because I feel it's very important.
Okay, we'll adjourn at 9:07.